The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Spectrum.
So, looking forward to maximizing this time, certainly some things that we'll tackle by email afterwards, but I'll hand it over to you guys.
Great, well, thank you so much. We're excited to be here and can't wait to get immersed in the community and look forward to a very productive session this afternoon. I don't think you've met Constance yet, Connie Collins. She'll have a chance to introduce herself in a second. We do have the agenda in the timeline and Pat is the lead associate, Pat Nudecker, so I'm going to ask her to really take us through the agenda today. And we have highlighted the areas and the things that we really need to get done, decisions we have to make today. And some of this will be able to accomplish by email, but we want to make sure we have time for discussion on some of these important issues. Yes, Ms. Maloney?
For just a moment, would you prefer a longer table so that you can all have surface to write on? It's a, we gave you that three-person table and we've got four people here and we can easily swing one over.
I'm done talking, so I'll bring it over right now and pass this off to Pat, but I appreciate that. I think that would be more comfortable. Thank you.
There we are. Well, again, ditto. Thank you so much. We're really excited to be here and more importantly, we're very excited to work with you. So, it's wonderful. As Max said, I will be the lead. That's only for organizational purposes. The three of us will work equally on your search. We'll be here together. We'll be doing all the work together. We'll be doing all the writing together. The lead just means more an operational connection so that we can keep all the information in one place, as I'm sure Eric perhaps would be your contact as well. Is that true?
Yes.
Great, perfect. Okay, well, with that said... Sure, now we'll scoot. Thanks, Katie. Appreciate that. Now that we have the table, let's use it, right? There we go. Thank, thank you. Oh, thank you, perfect. So, I believe you all have an agenda in front of you, so we'll just take a quick peek at that and then we'll go through in sections. Our purpose today is to really get this search organized. And so, you'll see everything from information that we need to just share with you to conversations that we need to have so that we have clarity, to actually a schedule, so that we know work, you know, work products and when they're due and the type of work that we'll have to be doing when. So, that pretty much is laid out in your schedule and if you're okay with that, we'll just go through this appointed at a time. Is that all right with everybody? Great, super. So, introductions again. We do have your bios from your website. I believe with maybe not as much complete information on you, Andrew, so we'll want to get that from you. And we also will be doing interviews with each one of you. But, to start, and if you'll notice on number one, the introductions, is there anything that you would like to just tell us real quickly that we might not have seen? And when I say bio, I mean this type of work, this that's on your website? So, we just use this as a springboard for each of us. Would you like to take a few minutes to just share something about yourself or would you like to wait for the interviews for that? You think you're okay? Okay, let's dive in. I think we can get the background information. We're going to divide up the board, obviously, and the superintendent interview and the three of us then will do a couple of you. And what we'll be doing is we're going into that next is mention to you that we'll contact you personally for that, so we don't have to worry about that right now. Great. The board liaison, I think we just confirmed Eric, would you, you'll be the person, true, that Sandy and I would work through again for organizing? Okay, great. Number three, my understanding through Max is that the contract is complete, so we don't have to do anything that here, so that's good on both sides. Let's spend the majority of our initial time taking a look at the timeline, if you would. And I believe that's on the back page of your packet.
A separate one, too.
Yeah, or a separate as well. And I have one with notes and one without notes, so I'll be with you. Nope, I had one that had writing on it that I wrote on. Here we go. Okay, so this pretty much outlines the whole search and you know, using good instructional design with the end in mind, we hope to have a superintendent for you by the end of February. Is that what you were looking for? And obviously, without any difficulty, that's a timeline that we think we can adhere to. People that are looking for positions, frankly, especially a school district of your size, they'll be looking early. So, you'll be in that first wave, I believe, of applicants. And, you know, without any unforeseen circumstances, I'm pretty sure we can meet that need. So, our work then is chunked out so that we can meet that deadline with you by early spring. Okay? So, let's take a look at that planning meeting today and even though I know this is a formal meeting, it's really a workshop. We're really going to just get through all this and decide. We would like to open the survey yesterday, so no, we'd like to open it as soon as possible. We will do that and we're going to leave that survey open until the close of November 11th. Now, remember, a lot of these things we're talking about, even though we're looking at them in a linear format, are all happening simultaneously. We're reviewing applicants, your posting is out there, your survey's open. All of that is happening simultaneously, but this just gives you some benchmarks that you can look forward to. So, we will work with Sandy, I believe, in creating just a link on your website. And then, you will help us understand how the traffic will be driven there, how you'll advertise that, because the survey will be open to your whole community and we'll come back and talk about more of the specifics. Okay, this is just pretty much the timeline. We'll be doing that advertising then in October and November. We would like to start our stakeholder interviews, focus group interviews and community forums, if possible, and if we can get this organized, we would like to do that in about two weeks. So, it would be the week of November 5th, 6th and 7th, which is a Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. And the three of us would be at your disposal and the disposal of the schedule that's arranged for us and we'll get into more detail to, to actually live in your community, day and night, and do whatever it takes to make sure that you have input from all the groups that you need. And we think we can meet that need as long as Sandy and the three of us can work together to get those set up. That's going to be the, and you said you've done this. Is this similar to what you've done before? Okay, great, thank you. And that would then allow us, I think, the first real benchmark, if you will, would be November 18th and you would have your profile by the 18th. That will be a combination of a summary of everything that we've learned in the interviews and the survey data. And so, we'll actually do a presentation for you, like we're doing now, and we'll share all that. And you'll have that in written form. Did you have a question, Eric? Sure. Sure. I think the structure, and everybody can jump in, the structure is probably somewhat similar. What makes it different, obviously, is the different groups and people. We have, we will divide up and we'll sometimes do two people, sometimes one, depending. And we will be going through a list of suggestions of groups you might want to consider. Basically, we're asking them what their hopes and dreams are for this district, what they're proud of, what they're excited about, what your future looks like. And we don't get into the weeds of the past. It's pretty much, are there any challenges we should be aware of? And it pretty much shapes and gives us a sense of what that group is looking for. And then, we transfer that to, and the last question would be something like, how do those things apply then to your impression of what a new superintendent should bring to your district? Does that make sense? It's, it's really a focus group. It's a conversation, yeah.
For the larger forums, it depends on the size, whether we have the whole group as a large group or whether we break it up into smaller groups. If there's 100 people, we break that up into, you know, two or three different sections with one facilitated with each. But, we do have the same generally standard questions. And during the, or both for focus groups and especially for the committee survey, we make sure that they have post-it notes or pieces of paper to jot down notes, to hand things out, to hand us notes afterwards if they are too shy to speak up, if they have an idea. And we also use this free technology piece called Padlet, where they can put in notes during the meeting. And we leave that open for a couple of days, 48 hours after the meeting, so if they have some thoughts after they leave, they can enter that. And it's just, and Padlet's nice. It's a great way to collect it and we can just print it out directly and give that to you. During that time, we will want to schedule one online forum, too, and I will run that and that will be a URL to the community. And we'll use the Zoom technology for that. That's worked very well, but same type of thing. We have the six questions up and people respond. They can type in their answers and we can type some back in real time with a couple of people helping. We have 500 slots, but usually we have, you know, about 15 people. But, the thing is that we've made it available to everyone and if we get more, that'd be great. We've done some on other issues with more than 100 people and it works just fine.
There you go, all right. Just wanted to add that it really is important that the word gets out to the community so that no one is saying, "I didn't know anything about it." And so, the way it's advertised, both in writing as well as, you know, orally, is really important so that as many people as possible and you know that everybody has an opportunity to be heard.
And just following that point, putting it on the web, your website is another way of being sure that word gets out, as well as each school announcing it to their parents through their newsletter.
Yes, so could you just give me just, and this not really deep in the weeds, but just a brief version of like, we're doing all this and we're getting the community, the profile developed. Can you just give me a hint of an idea as to where profiles differ? Like in communities for, because I mean, obviously, you know, everyone's going to want high student achievement and, you know, all, everyone, everyone's going to say diversity awareness, even, you know, some people are, even if they don't, even if they aren't really concerned about, they're probably going to say it because they're supposed to say it or whatever. So, what, like, where do, what, what kind, what are some ideas of things where communities end up looking a little different in their profile?
Can I just sort of start with that? In some instances, you want people who have had experience or can demonstrate that they've had experience in certain areas. Not that they just talk about it, but that what is the evidence that you have actually done this? In other instances, if a school district has some particular issues on the table or areas that are coming up and you want to know that you're looking for a superintendent and you want to put in the profile that you want someone with experience in, whether it's closing schools or anything else, then those are things that not every district would be interested in, but that you would be interested in if that's the case.
I think the other difference is, yes, a contemporary leader would sign on to all the same things that you just mentioned that school districts are looking for. Those are your school district goals. That's what we're all trying to do for children. I think the survey and the interviews help us find a little more about the characteristic of the person. And so, and it can depend on, you may have had a superintendent that was very authoritarian and very, you know, had a style of decision-making that perhaps the community or different groups would like to deviate from. So, they may say something like, "We need somebody to rebuild teams. We need somebody to be more collaborative in their style." So, we don't really get into discussing the current superintendent or the personality, but we do talk about what are the attributes of a leader that will align and bring success to your district? Does that help a little bit? It's, you know, decision-making style, personality, were they engaged in the community? You know, we'll hear things like, "You know, I know the superintendent's name, but I've never seen this person for three years," you know? Or, "Our superintendent is everywhere. We need that. Our community wants that." Those are the kinds of things that really help somebody decide if this is a fit for them.
Attention to detail versus the big picture is a big differentiator that we find in various districts.
On the topic of forums, I'm wondering, and we talked about this a little bit in the interview process, but I'd really like to find a way to engage some of our minority communities that don't speak English. And so, if we could find a way to schedule a forum that we could, you know, maybe someone in the district, a translator, could, could reach out to the Hispanic community or the Somali community or the Hmong community? Because if we just put out a flyer and ask them to come, we're not going to engage them and that's a voice I'd really like to strive to reach out to early in the process.
As I would say, as well as our community members that, at this point, aren't even in the minority when it comes to our student body, that don't, that do speak English, we need to find access to that as well.
Well, with your permission, let's skip around in the agenda a little and let's go to number seven on the second page, because it sounds like we're all interested in talking about who these groups might be. So, if we're all in agreement of kind of what this is going to look like, what these focus group interviews, and you're okay with that, let's talk about who those people might be and how you would like us. And this is where we're going to have to work hand in glove with Sandy, obviously, to get this set up and hopefully get it set up the remainder of this week and next week so that we can start the following week on a Tuesday. Is that going to work? Yeah, but I mean, if you can organize or set, do you think next week is doable as far as getting it set up and organized and invited so we can do it the following week? Or are we too tight? Okay, okay. Let's, should we try it and see?
You know, shoot for that first week, but if it has to go over into the second week. I mean, when I, honestly, when I looked at your, your overall timeline, I thought the end of February was pretty aggressive for the whole process. You guys are the ones doing the work, so that, that's okay. But, I would personally be okay, you know, I thought kind of spring break was sort of my, I think we'll be right around there. So, if we have to bump things back by a week, I, speaking for myself, I would be okay with making sure that we...
Oops, I'm sorry. And we can do whatever fits your need. We don't want to miss the best candidates for you. And that's why we're trying to stick to maybe a little more aggressive. This is a big job. This is a great position. People who are looking for this type of position will be looking now. And so, we want to keep it moving and then we can extend if we have to. But if we push it out a little too far in the beginning, we, I don't, you know, it's a horse apiece, but we want, we want to be able to bring you the best folks, so we'll try. So, we probably wouldn't be able to get the invitations out until probably the end of next week? So, that's only giving people a few days to make it work. Are you, I mean, what are you thinking?
Yeah, I just, I wonder if, I mean, I get the invitation piece. Are there other, you know, there are other channels that we can push out on social media and things we can do individually, word of mouth? And if there's a formal invitation piece of it, that would be at the end of next week, you think?
Yeah, because I, I think in the past, we've done, you know, like neighborhood associations, so we have to find all those kind of groups. We have to find all these people. So, that's what's going to be challenging. We actually had to make a lot of phone calls to see who the contact person is for those neighborhoods. Yes, yes. The city has a list of all the neighborhood association contact people, I would think.
I, I think that if we, we work early next week and we get a couple of things scheduled, even if it's not everything, if we, you know, we know this group or this is happening on this day, we do it through Facebook, we do it through word of mouth, we, you know, make the right contacts in the community and get other people to help, you know, just kind of do some guerrilla marketing type things. And then, if, you know, a handout for the, you know, in the school folders or something. And then, maybe that's where we have to push something back a little bit, but I'm confident in our ability to spread the word.
Tell me again, or remind me again, district staff cannot be part of this, right? They can be. Okay, so, okay, okay. I, I don't know why it didn't occur to me that that's the case. So, is the equity department able to help with this? Well, to get the word out to make sure that we are covering everyone, right? Right. Yeah, but I mean...
We don't want to have some groups on the 5th and then go into the following week. You want to do them 5, 6 and 7, right?
Well, we'd like to start that way if we can. The three of us are going to come over and we're going to live here for a period of time and stay over and just really work your community. So, it's really more of an efficiency, but we certainly could be effective and stretch that out.
If you needed to schedule a group, for instance, community groups at three different times, there are three of us, so it will be relatively easy to give some people choices and same groups choices. And we can work from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., so.
In all the communication, maybe we should all agree too, that in every communication that goes out, you also reinforce the survey link? Because that's another way of, oops, I can't make it, but I better go online and fill this out. So, we could make sure that they have those.
We're also able to, like, if there are groups like the Chamber, et cetera, that are having meetings during any of those days or whatever, we could also go to a meeting that's being held. So, those are some options, too.
I'm glad you brought that up because that was going to be my next question is, can we go to people rather than ask them to come to us? And what would, where would be some of those locations, central locations? And then, the other piece, too, just getting the word out, I mean, I think Facebook is such an easy, nice way to, especially our parents, creating an event and then we can easily find those key leaders and especially other local community organizations. We can tap in and ask them to share on their Facebook pages as well and that quickly, you know, gets to additional people. So, I would suggest that we do that.
Could say too that... Because I am a little sensitive to saying to somebody the end of the week, "Hey, come and talk to us next week," when they don't have a lot of time to plan. So, maybe we even say, you know, "We're anxious to start our first round of community input." So that we leave that open and we may have to build in some other words so they don't feel like, you know how it's going to be. Someone will read that and think, "Well, they must want, not want me to participate because there's no way I can get there next week." So, we can overcome that. That being said, is your availability on the 12th, 13th and 14th a possibility or is that not an option? Because I think there is that element of people wanting. We want this to, to be a thoughtful process and to give us enough time to... I can, we can do, I, let's see if we can all do that. I think we can make those things work. We are looking at the Mon, well, I think we can make that work. We're hoping to prevent, present the profile to you that Monday, the 18th, so. Do you think we can get the writing done and everything?
We work on the 15th for writing, so 12, 13, 14.
Were you, because we have a board meeting on the 18th? So, you were, is that, you were trying to hook on? With our board meeting?
That was our goal, was to present that leadership profile to you at the board meeting. Again, if we, if you feel comfortable pushing that back to a work session, we can, we can do that as, as well. But that, again, that's why this timeline, I mean, we, we want some flexibility, but we want to make sure to hit board dates and workshop dates when, you know, when you're available, that...
Because, I mean, we could potentially look at scheduling that meeting on a, not a board meeting night.
Yes.
That week.
Or like this, right?
Yeah. And that would give you a few more days if you're coming the week before to be able to prepare that.
Well, and it is a, you know, it is a thoughtful process, so I'm sure your agendas are full and depending on what other things you have on your agenda, it might be nice to have that separately. We did just sidebar a little bit and we could spread out and use both weeks. So, because of our availability, we can kind of overlap, dovetail a little bit. So, anything that could be scheduled, like on the 5th, 6th, 7th, we would go ahead and do. The ones that you think are possible. And we could do the next week as well. So, we could use both sets of dates.
The one thing that I do like about the 18th, though, is that, so that profile is sort of a culmination of our entire community and our regularly scheduled board meetings are, there's more attention to those. There's more people here, you know, if we do it at 1:00 on a Tuesday, we're going to get this. So, I, I do like the idea of putting it on a board agenda because then it'll, it'll, we'll be able to highlight all of that.
There's an advantage publicly for that, for sure.
Well, let's shoot for the 18th and let's still use both weeks of dates. Let's do both. And we'll shoot for it and like we said, let's plan for the best and something happens, we might have to adjust. But, let's plan for the 18th. Let's use 5, 6, 7, 8 if we need to and 12, 13, 14. We'll use those and spread it out depending on what's needed. The survey piece, you know, is all automatic, so it does not take long to generate that data, which is very, very specific. So, we'll be able to add that and we'll work on the writing as we go along. You'll receive summaries of the work as well as an analysis of themes across all the work. So, we'll do that. Yep, so let's, so let's, let's focus then if, if we're in agreement that we're going to use both, both weeks, both sets of dates and we're still going to shoot for the 18th. That's what we're all hearing, correct? Okay, we'll do that. So, we'll work with Sandy on 5, 6, 7, 8 if needed and 12, 13, 14. I wouldn't want to go past the 14th because we will have to have some writing time. In fact, maybe that week, if we could even do 12 and 13, we could use 14 for a writing day. That would be great for us. Okay, so with that said, let's take a look at item seven on page two and let's go through the, this list to make sure we know who, who you're interested in. We will each, we will contact you individually for board interviews and if it's okay with you, we'll do them by phone. Are you okay with that? Perfect. We can probably accommodate everyone's schedule better. We will also, one of us or two of us will interview your superintendent as well. And we use the same, if not very, very similar questions through all these. So, you know, research design would call for that. Are there district-level administrators, this would be the cabinet group or whatever you call it here, that you would like interviewed individually or would you like a cabinet focus group interview? That would be your directors, not your principal group, your directors and your...
Assistant superintendent.
Yeah, assistant, your district-level administrators. Rhonda, you had a thought?
Speaking for myself on this, in your experience, what have you seen? Because obviously, you want something very honest and work usable and, and authentic coming from that conversation. So, is it better to have that conversation with individuals or as a group?
I think we've seen that doing it as a group works the best. They have to move this district forward as a group. We always leave ourselves open for them and say, "If there's anything you need to follow up with," you know, sometimes for the good of the group, that they have ideas they just don't want to share in a larger group and we're open for that. We can do that through a conversation or a phone call. A district your size to get into everybody's individual opinion is going to be a little fractured, perhaps. So, I think we would, I know we will get good results for you in a group and we will leave it open that if there's individuals, they can follow up. Are you comfortable with that? No? Okay, we'll talk about that then. Go ahead.
So, I'm looking for more conversation about this. So, how do you avoid group think in a situation like that?
The, yeah, I like to say, honestly, you, you don't. And other than leave yourself open for follow-up and, and individual contact. And also, again, we, we always give people notepads to write and they'll, they'll slip you something. And, yeah, we, one thing I like to preface all the meetings with is the Abilene paradox. You know, the, the journey to Abilene. I'm sure you've probably all heard of that somewhere. But it is, uh, when everybody decides to, to go somewhere, none of them really want to go that way. But they, they go along to get along. But I think past point i- is, uh, critical because they do have to work together to move the district forward. And, um, in, in my experience, that, that's helped. We've had the chief academic officer and business person and HR director and communications director all there. And they, they bring their own insight into it. And, um, a, a, and if there is someone afterwards who wants to talk, we haven't found that they don't, you know, you don't know who don't, you don't, who doesn't talk to you. But we have had people follow up in larger districts.
Thinking on that. If we go ahead with a group interview and if you feel strongly that there's somebody that needs more individual attention, we certainly can schedule that. And that doesn't have to be a, you know, a big matrix of issues or ideas. We can certainly follow up. And often, it's not as, it's usually not the person that you're interesting in capturing. It's something that's going on in that department. It might be your Equity Office. It might be your Finances. And so the way to do that and call attention without calling attention to the person and leaving it like, well, how come they got a personal interview and I didn't? You, the board may say, we would like particular, we'd like greater depth from our Finance Department. We'd like greater depth from our Equity Office. We can do that as well. Would that help?
Considering the size of our table of organization, how many people are we looking at?
I would recommend that you do the general meeting with the Cabinet and that you do individual interviews with each of the direct reports to the Superintendent. Because rather than just giving, making someone decide whether or not they need, feel compelled to give you more information, make that expectation. I think it's a reasonable expectation to have the direct reports, who have a more intimate relationship with the Superintendent, give you feedback. And do them individually after they've all attended the, the Cabinet, the joint Cabinet thing. How big is the Cabinet?
Eight or nine Cabinet? And it's the same for direct reports?
They're in that group of eight.
It's the same people? That's the only?
The Cabinet is very small. She has a learning, what's the other group that's bigger? That used to be her Cabinet. It's the, like, an, um. Yeah, no, the executive directors aren't in the Cabinet. No, no.
So the Cabinet are all the direct reports. We may need another group here then.
Yes.
I think we need your Cabinet, which is district level. And then we need this other group as a second group.
Yeah, because Cabinet is, is Communications, Legal, HR, Finance, Facilities, Technology. Two more. Oh, well, and then John and Vicky.
Little more on the instructional side.
No, Mike is Facilities.
Oh, okay. Oh, Facilities too.
Yeah, and Technology.
And what do you call that group? Okay.
Oh, no, that was the Cabinet I was listing. Oh, they call it the Learning Leadership Team, okay.
So the next level then, the.
Executive Directors, yeah.
Depends how big you want to get it. We have an operational meeting where it's, where it captures Food Service and all of those people. Or if you want to go smaller, then it's just, you know, it's more the instructional people.
I'm wondering if you split that next layer into Instruction and Operations?
Let's do that. Let's do, so one of the three under C instead of one, that'll be a Cabinet? Yeah, there's the group. There'll be an operational group and an instructional group.
That takes care of C, the administrators. Go ahead.
No, no individual.
No, a, and I think individuals, right on the leadership.
I would have at least individuals with.
No, the direct reports.
The direct reports.
Which is all eight. Yeah, so I think.
Okay, no, then I would have individual interviews with Vicky and John. The two associate superintendents.
Okay, but not all.
It wouldn't have to be the other six. Right, no, the other six direct reports. I didn't realize that there were.
Does it, um, do, do people opt out? Or is there an unwritten rule that you opt out if you're going to be a candidate? Or not necessarily? Or is there a written rule that if you're going to be a candidate, you opt out?
Well, pers, I think we want their, this is input, remember? We're not, we're not sharing out with them. So it's input. And as long as you're comfortable with them giving their input, their one voice. Later on, when we talk about how you want internal candidates treated, we might come up with a little more of a format for how you want that handled. I would say include them.
Yeah, I've had them included in, in searches I've done. And it, it really seems to make no difference to the other members of the group. They speak their mind. And I did want to speak to that point. The groups that I've hosted have not been hesitant to say exactly what they think, regardless of who else is in the circle. Uh, they have been strong opinion sharers. And so I don't think we need to worry too much about not getting the essence because they see such value in who's coming next. They don't want to let this opportunity slide by nor to defer to their colleague.
Well, and I think especially since your report will capture themes and ideas. It won't be he said, she said. So it really is the essence of, uh, you know, the information that was shared. And, you know, to Sarah's point, they're comfortable, they're strong leaders, remember? They're used to probably speaking up and advocating for their position. So with that said, we'll go with the Cabinet. We'll leave it open to individual interviews as well. And then we'll also have operational and instructional. So now that C Administrator's turned into three. And later, when we get into talking about how we'll handle internals, we'll loop back. But for now, we will just include them. Another thing, your other administrators might not know if they're applying or not. So they might not want to tip their hand either. You know, and say, well, I'm not going to because I'm going to apply. They might not know that yet. So I think we'll be fine with that. I don't think you have to worry about not capturing. Okay, D is your principals and assistant principals. And I know you've got a long list of schools. We thought rather than divide it by, um, grade level, we would just offer two dates and then they can go. That would spread out the group and that would allow them more opportunity. Or are you preferring to have your grade level groups speak together?
Do you have experience both ways?
Yes, and mostly because of the size of a district. So when you get really large.
Do you see that it, that you get different information when you have elementary and secondary together? And that, or compared to when you have them in two different groups?
You know, I think the, the great value is in having those groups that are made up of different levels hear each other.
Okay.
Uh, and so I think you get, you get good feedback and they get to hear each other, which is the additional advantage.
So we thought perhaps, we thought perhaps two dates, at least two dates. And we could go into the two weeks now too. We could do more because you're very, very large, I know, and a number of schools. We could do a couple in each week.
Sandy, two after-school dates.
We're thinking after-school might be the easiest for them. Kind of after, after the last bus rolls out is what we've found to work well. Did you have a concern, Rhonda?
Is there anybody on the board that, um, I just look into the list and I, you know, I see administrators and the Cabinet. But knowing, um, special education needs, our investment, what we've done. I'm just wondering, I don't know how that works because it is such a big, you know, to me, it, it, I, it needs to get the right amount of attention. Is it possible for that? I don't know how that works and what, what you're doing. But I don't want it to get lost in the mix of everything else.
Well, a couple of things. One thing, we, with knowing that we can make sure our questions and our prompts really probe for that. I don't think we're opposed to doing something individually, but a word of caution. Then your Booster Club Athletics are going to want a separate. And then your this will want a separate, and everybody else will want a separate. No?
Oh, yeah, I'm okay with saying no. I, I'm, I would be okay with. I would be okay with saying potentially yes to Special Ed or maybe a Special Ed Student Services Combined Group having a special session. And also okay with saying to the Athletic Booster Club, uh, no. I mean, if there's, that, those are so.
I, I would say knowing the, um, challenges and the importance and the significance of that department, I would never classify them with Booster Club Athletics. Yeah.
So, so just to probe to, is there, in addition to students with special needs, which would be what we traditionally think of that population, are there other individualized student needs that you want to capture? Where we would call that group even larger, like Student Services? Or that would, then it's nursing and it's counseling and it's direct services for students with special needs. It's all of that. Or are you really wanting to hone in on, are you really honing in on Special Ed? Because just help us understand. We can do it anyway.
And again, speaking for myself, I'm, we have, I think it seems to be a, a national problem, issue, challenge with finding enough staff, which sometimes can mean, and I'm not saying this is the case, but, uh, finding the right person who understands the importance of preparing the staff for those jobs and being able to, um, reach for those positions. Just for me personally, it's, it's a very important, um, focus group, just for me.
Clarify again, what is the group? Is it really specific to special education? Or is it the whole gamut of, uh, special needs of all, support services for all special needs?
Again, I, I mean, feel free to chime in. But I'm just thinking, I guess maybe special needs in general. So, 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 or even, um, socioeconomic, um, needs as well.
Student Services Team. Keep in mind too, we will also capture those issues when we talk with parents, when we talk with community leaders. And we will be cognizant of that need when we look for the Superintendent. So I'm not going to minimize the need to have a focus group, but know that we'll hear from that input. But we also will be aware when we look for a Superintendent. Um, I understand what you're saying, Rhonda. But I'm thinking that as integrated as our special education program is, is within the district, that I would certainly hope that as you talk to administrators, as you talk to teachers, as you talk to support staff, that should all be heard. And if we can put you on alert that you're, if you're not hearing enough. I would however, consider, um, encouraging us to do a special group, perhaps Parents of Students with Special Needs. Because I think, it's the parents who are not going to necessarily feel as comfortable talking with just a general group of parents. And they've got very specific concerns. And I think I would definitely focus in on the parent group. Oops, sorry. That's okay. Just be, that's okay, you can. Just be mindful of as you're going through these other interviews that if you're not hearing a whole lot about Special Ed, because you should be hearing a whole lot about Special Ed, then we need to dig deeper. You need to dig deeper.
And to that, you may not hear a lot about Special Ed from parents because, uh, parents of, uh, students with special needs have a lot going on and are not always tapped into what we're even doing today. So I think it's important that it's maybe some, there's some effort. I do like the idea of a parent group. But I think just to really be able, because it is something that I think we need to, we need.
That's why we're paying them the big bucks to seek them out. Do you have parent advisory groups that's already organized, already mobilized? Okay, we could find that out.
Yeah, I thought there was an EL one. I'm not sure about Special Ed.
I think we're hearing the need. We are reinforcing, I hope we're reinforcing to you that we will be very aware of this throughout the whole process of what we could do. We will reach out so that, I also hear the need for people to be heard is, is a factor. And we'll have to work with Sandy and probably your Pupil Services Team to figure out how we do that. Does that seem right?
Um, you had mentioned using Zoom and technology to meet. Can you talk a little bit about how you see that showing up here? Because obviously, we have a lot of folks that would, um, not be able to be there in person but might be interested in technology. Can you talk about that?
So, uh, we, we can offer that at, at any time. You know, we want to do at least one large virtual town hall, community forum. But we can, uh, I, I'd be glad to set up special times for a, a contact with that. I think that's, that's a fabulous idea. Uh, we have run single-issue, uh, meetings in, I, I remember I previously worked on, you know, whether it was full-day kindergarten or the budget or opening or closing school. I mean, there are things to, that we, we would do those virtual. So, um, we'll, we'll, we can set those up. And I, I think that's important to do, um, you know, given the size of the district and, and just to make that offer. So, uh, a, a, as we go through the list of focus groups, we'll identify those where we do want to have a, a separate, um, online availability. That's a great idea, yeah.
Look ahead. Well, I don't, I just, sure, go ahead.
Yes, I, I had that down, but I don't know.
Katie, Katie did not.
Because I, there's, they're working together. And I'd like to hear them have that conversation together. And let people need to dig deeper than do that.
Because they would come up in two groups. It would be in the Cabinet and in those other two, Operational and Instructional. We would make sure special needs are threaded through all of that.
If you're not, sorry, if you're not, i- if your opinion is that we're not integrated well, that might be uncomfortable in a combined meeting. If we're combining together because of how, right, because of how well-integrated we are. And I think we're not in this, no?
I think if you have everybody in the same room, the concerns are more likely to surface than not. And I think, I think you need to have that first.
When I, I'm sorry.
Not. I breathe. Take a breath. Sorry, sorry. I just think we could, you know, because you can, then you still have the option of dig deep, digging deeper and bringing in people that you feel you need to get more information from. She's done. Don't talk about.
I, I, uh, the one thing that I worry about and I'm very sensitive to is, you know, if we say teachers, open to any interested teachers. If you're a social worker, if you're a counselor, if you're a school psychologist, that doesn't speak to you. So either we have to change that language or we have a separate whole group, any support.
Certified staff.
Yeah, certified, yes. But, um, there was a search I was working with where they had a certified staff meeting and then there was a classified staff meeting. Just before we close or move past, I want to make sure that you're, we've captured what you need, Rhonda. And I, I'll ask the board, is, are, aside of the people and the leadership, are there issues you want us to probe when it comes to meeting the needs of special, students with special needs?
I would say that, um, something that we're going to be chronically having to deal with is underfunding from the state. Our next Superintendent's going to have to be able to navigate that. Our current one can and does. But our next one is going to have to also understand that the, the state is not, it's not, it's not doing its, its share. And we're going to have to be able to have someone who's, um, politically savvy.
That was totally.
Yeah, right. Um, uh, to navigate politically and, um. Um, to navigate politically and to push constantly for more funding for special ed. Our district has made a huge investment in the last few years in special ed, but it's never enough, so.
And I was just looking back at our notes from the previous meeting. I think your data shows a little over fifteen percent with students with specific disabilities and twenty-two percent ELL. So you do have a pretty hefty population. Are you saying that's an area that's growing for you? Okay. And the needs, I would assume like many districts, the extreme needs, right? Okay.
The, I'm sorry, the.
Yeah, and I don't, go ahead.
I was just gonna add, I mean, we're scheduled to go for ninety minutes. Some of us are on our lunch break, so I just want to make sure. This is an important topic, so I'm not trying to minimize it, but
We can get into it.
It's not, yeah.
Union leadership, we'll work with you on that. Support staff, if you have unions for your support staff, we'll work with them. G will change to certified staff, and we thought, again, two meetings after school, multiple dates or a couple of dates rather than break them out by, you know, grade level or whatever, or building. Support staff. Yeah, change. Classified, yeah. H will become classified. I'm sorry. You don't, what do you say? Support? Okay. Leave it at support, okay?
So we'd have two meetings after school for them.
Could, uh-huh, two. And then students, is there a superintendent's advisory of students that's already set up by chance? Oh, would that, I think that sounds good.
Yeah.
We want student voice. What's tough is, you know, it's tough to really capture representative student voice.
Ken, I think what has to happen with ICSC is, I think you want to reach out to that group, and we need to make sure that that group reaches out to invite additional people to make sure it's representative. And I think if they're, you know, given the green light by us to do that, they'll probably do it. But if it's not specifically mentioned to them, they'll probably just see it as their, a meeting of them.
ICSC. Okay. We will do that. Are there former board members you want included individually or as a group?
Or not.
Or not.
Some districts want that, some don't.
We have a few that have remained pretty active in our district. I'm wondering about them. Thinking about Mike Blacka maybe, or Judy Crane. Those are the two that come to mind that still are involved.
Rather than have a special group for Mike and Judy, I'd rather someone reach out to them and say, hey, there's this session, we'd really like you to go, we'd like to get your feedback, rather than try to engage them individually.
No, I can't.
Okay, go ahead.
I would also like to have Celestine Jeffries added to that. She's the only person of color to ever sit on this board, and she's the mayor's chief of staff.
Interview. We can, a lot of times you get the individual voice, but you also get the history, and that's what we're trying to capture here.
Judy and Mike can give a lot of long-term history. Celestine brings a very specific voice and has a lot to offer as far as local political things as well. And she obviously works for our mayor, so.
Those names, Judy Crane, Mike who?
Blacka.
What?
Blacka, B-L-E-C-H-A.
And Celestine Jeffries. You could probably do Mike and Judy together. They've got, or individually. Or invite them.
Invite all three of them.
I would almost be inclined to send a separate invitation to Celestine, because with her work schedule and things like that, I think she'd, you know, right, and she, and you could capture.
Might be able to go to the mayor's office, because if the mayor's on the list as well.
Right, right.
Yeah. And they might, like, are you saying have them together, Eric and Celestine? Yeah, to cover a lot of the same stuff.
One right after another. I would leave it up to them.
We could do a phone conference as well, too. I mean, we could, we'll work that out. Okay, your councils, PTAs and PTO councils? I assume together. I mean, we can't do every school individually, obviously. What are you thinking? I'll call for those, okay. I'll call for.
We also. No. This would be every PTO. I mean, that would include any parent that wanted to come. Yeah.
Another, yeah.
But yeah, and then the superintendent also has a parent advisory.
Oh, that's good. That's a good one. We want that.
That we'd specifically send out invitations to them, I would think. But then, and I don't know how many parents would come in terms of if you want to schedule
A couple of them.
A couple of them, yeah.
We could do that.
I mean, that might be.
And sometimes those can be during the day, too. Sometimes, you know, maybe the elementary parents.
Actually, if you could do one in the day and one in the evening to give the people the work schedules.
Uh, you mentioned the mayor. Are there other individual business leaders that you want, or groups that you would like contacted? You mentioned the mayor.
The county. The county board.
County exec.
Executive, yeah.
Do you have a chamber?
Yes, we have a chamber.
We have a chamber of commerce, and our current superintendent has worked very hard to develop a pro public education.
There's also a partners in education group, that is a combination of chamber and local superintendents. And so that business, the business people from that partners in ed are the most invested in, or not necessarily the most, but are invested in education in the region.
So I've reached out to Lori Radke already. And she and I were gonna meet, but the date we picked is after all of these, so I'll have to reach back out to her. But there's a couple of groups within the chamber, partners at ed, and then Rhonda, do you want to?
Thank you. No, it's just more about, I think, the current young professionals group. When I think, because they're potentially future, future parents. I think, I don't think any of them are at this point yet, but they, they would be, I would imagine, potential, I don't know, families coming into the.
And part of this will be, we want to make sure they're all heard. Help us understand how important it is that they all have to be individually heard. Because we can, we're putting them, no, but I mean even putting groups together. Who's mentioned need a separate invite, or a chamber group that specifically calls on those, or do you want those separate?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, if you go to the chamber as the top, and we mention these other groups specifically, and they can incorporate all of them. The other thing, too, is while building this candidate profile is important, and we could ask every single person in our community, really where we need to knock this out is when we start to get candidates, and we want to get people in front of people. So, we want to be thorough with this step, too, but this is the first step, and really the second step is where we pick somebody. And I, you know, so not trying to skim over this again, but I would want to make sure that if we've got some candidates, we specifically reach out to current and say, hey, we'd love you to come and meet our two candidates and give us your thoughts.
I'd also just like to add, we were contacted by UWGB being interested in participating in this process. I think, was the chancellor, was it the chancellor? But no, he's not there. I'll follow up and find out who it was that they had recommended. I will let you know, but also NWTC, we have a lot of partnerships with them.
There's actually two.
Well, how about a higher ed category then?
There's.
Let's do that.
There are two community groups that I've been contacted by that very much want to have a part in this, and one is the Turbo Charge Group, which is UWGB, the Technical College in our district, and there are multiple people from each of those organizations working together with that. Then there's also a Chief Brown County, which is another collaborative between our, the chamber and business partners, nonprofit partners, and our, actually our ten school districts in our county. Our district's been very involved in that, and I've, so I know they have a and our current superintendent has sat on their executive leadership team for that group, so they're very interested in having input. And I don't know if that's.
So as an example, could the three of, a Chief Brown County, Turbo Charge, and this other higher ed group, could they be invited to one session? Okay.
Yeah, that would make, because they actually cross over and overlap.
They're probably the same, similar people. Okay.
Yeah, or in some cases, the same people, yeah.
So we'll call, for now, we'll call that our higher ed or post-secondary, and then we'll know Sandy to incorporate all of those.
Are there topics besides the focus group just because I have a, I have a meeting at a school at two thirty? It's, it's close enough by, but I wanted to make sure if there's maybe others who have to leave, too. Are there other whole topics that need to be?
Yeah, two things. I would, I would like to, for the online survey, you know, we just aggregated for six groups. We can talk with Eric about that, and we can do parents, teachers. You could basically pick any six groups for that online survey. So we need that information to get, in order to get the survey link. And then the other piece that we have to have is for the
I was pressing out the beginning. No, I'm not. Is for the application materials, what you want for the application materials? Because, you know, we're recommending a resume, three references, with cell phones and emails and a cover letter, but if there's other prompts or other information you want for those initial applications, we need to know those two things before we split up today.
In the description for their advertisement?
Yeah, that would help. If we, I mean, we can write a generic ad description, but if you have specific keywords you would like, thanks, Pat. Keywords in that adverti- keywords in that advertisement, we could work with Lori from communications, or Sandy or Eric. But we want to get that advertisement posted on our website right away.
We can work with Sandy and make sure we capture your keywords. To your point, Andrew, it might be good that we all listen and reiterate the bit about confidentiality. Once we get into this and we get candidates' names, it is critical that we all keep those confidential. You'll, for all the obvious reasons. You'll have candidates that, where their school districts won't know they're interviewing. So please be careful, because the candidates are interviewing you as well as you are them. So we all need to agree together that we won't talk about candidates' individual names outside of when we're working together as a team.
Do we know what languages the, we want the survey in, because if we want more than English or Spanish, then we need to be aware of that.
Is your, are your Mung, is your Mung population, are the parents readers, or is it oral?
Well, I would say a large part of our Mung population are multiple generations, and so the parents speak English.
Right.
But we still have families that don't, and I, but I don't know.
But do they read? Because that's what I've learned, is it's very.
And I think the equity department would be able to help us to know how to, because we do surveys and and reach out to capture voices that, you know, are automatically looking for surveys and things like that, and make sure their languages that they can use, so.
You've mentioned a couple of times your Somali population. Would we have the opportunity to host a survey evening at a school with a translator, where they could actually fill it out right there? Would that help?
I'd actually, I think if you're gonna do that, I would suggest reaching out to KAMSA and going directly to their space. They're on the west side. Go to their building, have them set it up. They can provide the translator for you.
I'm sorry.
Or with you, but you'll get a much better turnout if you go to them.
Perfect. And so Sandy, you're aware of that, and who that is and how to do that. I think rather than translating the whole survey and using the time for that, now I don't assume we have Somali?
I'll send you, I'll email Said's number and email. He's the, he's the lead of this KAMSA group.
We'll go there, and then we'll walk through the survey, and we'll let their translator, and they can actually enter. We can take, we can do a mini focus group that way, too.
That would be great. Thank you.
You bet. Um, so. Okay, survey groups. We'll finish up the focus groups, then. Is there anything there that? Do you have a faith group? We'll talk with Sandy about that. Local government, we've captured some of those. Other, are there anywhere missing that come to mind? We might be able to slot them into a group.
Oh, I'm not running a meeting.
Go ahead.
We're pretty informal.
What about the Brown County Taxpayers Association? Right? I mean, I guess because, right? Well, they're active especially during referendum projects, so you might not want to disem for this.
On the side of including, right? So, we'd be glad to do that with you.
The other group that's reached out to me, and I don't think they need a special group, but probably a special invitation, is the Green Bay Advocates for Public Education.
Oh, yeah, Betty will be mad if we don't.
Yeah, she's called me several times, like, how come you haven't gotten in touch with me? I said, it's coming on Thursday. Just give me a break. Public education. So again.
Yeah, we didn't hear.
We also have Champions for Green Bay Public Schools, same kind of concept, but the two different groups.
I would say, it sounds like you have quite a few groups, and if you're comfortable with us working with Sandy, just to make sure that all those groups get personal invitations, but we may combine them into, okay, good, perfect. Okay, just so we leave with that agreement. That should be great. And then always, they can follow up individually if they need to.
Right.
Okay, with respect of time, let's, I think it might be a good idea to go through the community leadership profile grouping. Remember, you select six groups, and that will allow us to disaggregate your data. Apologize if you don't have it in front of you, but we'll read them. We can give you our opinion of some that probably might not be worth creating a separate group, because they're small.
In fact, I'll read them.
And you.
Yeah, that's good.
We'll go back. So if you want them as a separate group.
Okay, go.
So, because there's about twelve, administrator, separate group. So when they answer, they'd be answering, and you would know that all administrators. Now, think of how many administrators are gonna do a survey, or are you gonna get that somewhere else? So administrator, separate group, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, board members, yes or no? Personally, I'd say no. There's only seven of you. We're gonna talk to all of you. I wouldn't waste a group because of your size. Certified licensed staff? Do you want to know how your staff, different staff think differently?
Yes.
Yes? And then classified staff, I assume would be a yes, too.
Wait, what's classified?
Oh, I'm sorry. Support, support. You're right.
When we say support staff, does that include maintenance facilities and maintenance?
Monitors, yeah. Clerical, yeah, everybody.
Okay, community member, that would be your at-large group.
Yes.
Okay. Employee, I would say no, because if you're gonna disaggregate, okay. Faculty, maybe no. Okay, parents of students attending school. Yes, okay. Staff, that would be like employee.
I already got them all covered.
Student, are you gonna push this out to your students? That would be a way to get student voice. Let's put it as a yes for now. We'll go back and count. Support staff, then no, because we already, teacher, no. Teacher licensed, non-licensed. So if we go with what you said, your six groups disaggregated would be administrators, certified licensed, support staff, community member, parents with students attending school, and students. I think you've got everybody. Super. All right, we'll use those. That takes care of that one. Let's talk quickly, unless there's other things that jump out for you. Internal, or can we wait with that?
I want to make sure we get, I want to make sure we get application materials. So we, in the bigger districts, this is what we do. We really, it's resumes with three references and a cover letter. In the cover letter, for example, Denver wanted them to address, what evidence can you share that you've addressed achievement gap issues? And, uh, Glendale wanted to talk about how, how would you, um, work with, uh, different groups with a significant, different eth- racial ethnic groups that have opposing points of view? Because they had a big issue that created some national stir there. I don't know what, what Fort Wayne's doing, oh, they have thirty thousand. So are there any, a- a- anything beyond that? Because we're going to collect all the applications, we put them in a board portal, and I'll send that out, um, probably Monday to each of you with the minutes in here. So you'll get, uh, it's a shared drive, basically. So all the applications are going to go in there anyway, you'll be able to see them all. But do you want prompts in that, do you want other application materials?
So, right now, if we do nothing, the, um, the cover letter will be whatever they decide to write to?
Exactly.
Okay.
And reference letters?
We don't, we don't collect letters, not, not in this, not yet. We just, we just ask them for, uh, the names, phone numbers, emails, titles of...
I'd be interested in a very open-ended question that would get at multiple different things, I think. But it would be interesting to see how they answered it, just in terms of what has been your experience with improving equity in your district, or in... Something like that.
Is the board in agreement with that?
I was thinking a question on equity, too, but I... What is it about equity and law?
No, that's exactly why I don't want, that's why I don't want it to be specific. I purposefully want it to be open-ended.
Even here, probably, I, I have an idea, but I, I don't, I guess I would let you folks draft it and get, get back to us, rather than...
Well, no, I just want it to be open-ended, because, because how someone answers an open-ended question...
Will tell you a lot.
Will tells you a lot. If you direct them to answer a specific question, then you're getting an answer that maybe they wouldn't have given you otherwise.
I'm, as I look behind you, your three taglines, engagement, equity, excellence? Would you, would you like us to say something like, please make sure you include your, um, your experience with engagement equity and achieving excellence? Or you just want to stick with the equity?
I think, yeah, I think if you ask somebody in a cover letter to address all three of those, you're going to get some cover letters that are longer than cover letters should be. Let's just, something about equity, and let it be open-ended, see where they take it.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to go ahead to my, my meeting at a school, I don't think I have any, uh, there's nothing I would have added, you know, differently here? Okay, thank you. Oh.
In any part of this, does anyone, have they ever, or hasn't, have you considered having somebody provide a two-minute video testimonial? I mean, just, they do this for corporate America, so is there, I mean, they, some sort of, where you get a feel for someone? Is there ever anything like that out there, other than everything?
Well, we interview all the candidates, either face-to-face or online. So I, I know maybe that's not bringing that to you, but we will have met and talked to every candidate before we bring their name to you. Does that help it? Does that take care of it? Okay.
Unless someone didn't meet legal minimum qualifications, everyone will, will, uh, will, and everyone will have a face-to-face, or, or at least video. Unless, unless, I mean, we don't want to waste your time if someone doesn't meet legal state requirements, obviously. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thanks.
So, that's an interesting suggestion. I think it's a technology piece, really, but so to not get bogged down in the time, just know that we will face-to-face all of them.
Okay.
Um, okay, go ahead.
Let me just add, you know, uh, that may be a good differentiator for the slate.
That's why, yeah.
Yeah, before you interview the slate, we could, we could ask them to submit a two or three-minute video. Um, one of the things that we like to do with slated candidates, ask them to present, give us a sample presentation, a board presentation, but, uh, that, that, I think that would be great. So let's, let's think about that as for the second round, maybe a little video testimonial.
A video testimonial for the slate.
For the slate.
The slate, yeah.
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 Yeah. And that, the slated are the candidates that you've chosen as, the ones, the top, however many we decide are the...
Six to eight, whatever, right.
Are the ones that, that you feel have fit the, yeah, that, that's a good idea.
And it'll depend on the pool, but just so you're comfortable with at least six to eight, and then we'll see if there are more. But that's usually a pretty good, a pretty substantial pool, okay? That's good, so we've got that one. We made an assumption, but we should ask you about candidate expenses. Are you in a position to cover any expenses for the first round? And don't feel obligated.
No.
I said, uh-uh.
Okay, we just want to make sure.
Well, that's, yeah, they're good.
What about the finalists? What about the... The first round, and, and we all said the same thing, a person is interested in you, they need to get here. Okay, um, application we talked about, we can do salary fringe, and, um, to Sarah's point, um, candidate expense, when we get to that, um...
Can I ask a question? Have you, um, have you given any thought, or is it too premature to ask what we should be offering for this position as far as a salary? I'm pretty curious about that, but if it's too premature right now, I, I understand.
I don't think we're prepared to talk now, but we'll bring you comps. So when we get to that point, and probably the, our, one of our next meetings together, or we can, how would you do that? Max, would you send it to Eric, kind of, or we'll, we'll gather some comps for you, so you have data to look at. State, and then maybe across the nation, districts, your size. Would that work? Is that okay? Yeah, so you'll have some information to work.
Do we have a copy of the superintendent's, um, salary package? Yes.
Sandy can send it to you.
Okay, great.
We know there's no residency requirement anymore. Max, do you feel...
Is there not? I, I have, somebody has handwritten in the column, S.J., is this legal?
Yeah, Sarah Jerome.
We found out that it isn't.
Municipal, municipal employees are, cannot be bound by residency. And, and we've been advised...
The, the law was passed, I think in tw- twenty thirteen, because in my contract in Kettlemore, I did have a, a residency requirement. Uh, but it is no longer, uh, something that you can, uh, require.
So do we basically have, we're left with strongly urging them to live within the city boundaries?
I'm not sure you can even...
I'm not sure you can even do that, but you can certainly say, and we can say to them, how much the board would be enthusiastic about seeing you in, in the voting booth.
I am highly enthusiastic about having them live within the...
And you can, you can tell them that historically, the superintendent has resided within the district.
We expect you to be present in the community.
And candidates that you want, but at least don't live in that town.
Right, right.
Oh, interesting.
Okay, that's an interesting... That's great. Another thing, too, is, uh, we'll advise candidates that, you know, because every state's different, that it's important to understand the, um, expectation of your community. Whether it's yea, nay, or legal or not. What is the expectation? In my opinion, a district your size, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to not live here. I mean, how, I, I can't imagine how you would do this, and so know that we will really probe for that as well. Yeah. You can't beat it. Well...
They need to be able to vote.
And vote, vote.
Well, and we've all seen in communities, when there's an issue, if the superintendent doesn't live, that becomes the lightning rod, or the, or the scapegoat, if you will. So we, we'll, we'll watch for that for you, in a, take the, take the monkey off your back a little bit. Um, is there anything else that you're curious about? Either any of us, did we miss anything, or Max, or...
Anything for the, the keywords for the advertisements, any, uh, for the advertisement or website?
Suggestion for that, and this is how we, uh, because we posted something on our website a couple of months ago, just to announce that we were kicking this process off. If you could send me something generic, or some, and then I'll send it to the rest of the board, they're pretty good at wordsmithing, or hey, throw this sentence in there, take that out. And then I'll send it back to you once we vetted it, but if you can get us a starting point, we'll, uh...
And you might, um, Lori Blakesley, who's our communications, um, director, she has a brochure that she just put together, um, to, for teacher recruitment. So she, it's a, a description of how you describe our district to people that aren't here yet. So that might be a helpful place for you to start.
We'll use that, um, but just one more time, are there keywords that you definitely want in there? Anything come to mind? It may be in there already, but just call it out.
Engagement, equity, excellence.
Yeah, those three, okay.
Yeah, um, uh, yeah, I don't, I mean, our strategic framework has, um, you've probably seen that, the four academic excellence, thriving workforce, personalized pathways, and engagement. Um, I don't know if those, those might be in this description.
I think working with your communications department, that sounds great, that there'll be a springboard, we can tweak it then to be more to an administrative audience.
Right.
And, um, anybody who's doing their homework will look at your website, right? I mean, they should, that should, there should be evidence in your cover letter that they have been aware.
Yeah.
Sure.
One thing for me, and I know we'll get into this more with interviews, but for me, it's shifting demographics of our students. We need someone who has a firm understanding and a, and experience uplifting an entire community together, and how that aligns with and works with the shifting demographics, not only of our students, but of our school district and of our community. Um, so for me, that's top of mind, thank you.
Piggyback on that and say that there are plenty of people in our community that don't see all that diversity as a plus, and I, we need someone who sees that as, um, like a superpower.
Spoke after we left last time, what a great board you appear to be, and that you come across very genuine, uh, very serious but joyful about your work. So we're, we're really excited to work with you, it shows, so, yeah, it did, we did, that was, that was our parking lot. Sure, we'd be. We'll write the soundbite for you, right? Yeah, but, but the genuine nature, but honestly, you just have this joyful way about going, and I'm sure you have very hard issues to deal with, but your commitment really shows.
Come to our meeting next Monday.
And this is maybe something that's already covered, and I don't have to think about it, but is everything that's going to be out there, is it, um, phone and, uh, computer, like tabletop or laptop accessible?
Yes.
Okay.
Platform independent.
That, yeah, that's the word?
Well, whatever.
Yeah, I guess what, whatever the word is, you know what I mean, right? So it's, everyone can access it.
Comes to mind that you came in thinking about, or you still, and keep in mind, you just, you know, either through Eric or through Sandy, get your questions back to us. We'll be very, uh, very much in touch with you on a twenty-four-seven basis.
As the, uh, focus groups start to get finalized and dates start to get set, um, just let us know, because we'll, we'll be just as good at advertising as anything else that we can do. So we'll, we'll promote and push. Is it, um, okay, I, I would assume that, uh, board members attend any and all of the sessions, or would you recommend against that?
I think that's, uh, an interesting question to think about, because there are some circumstances where, uh, board members, uh, diminish the honesty of frank comments in, um, community forums. And I know that some board members have really wanted to come, and some have come. And then some feedback I have received from the participants have said, I would have said something different had the board member not been there.
Well, that's... And I've also seen situations where sometimes it's been very difficult for board members not to respond to something that was said. So that has, yes, yes.
So you're not telling us no, but you're telling us to be cautious about it, and, and just be aware of how that could impact the feedback.
Of you to decide, I'm going, but the rest of you have made the decision that you don't want to do that.
How do we, how do we then make sure that they, these groups understand that while we actually maybe would like to be there, we're, maybe it's making a conscious decision not to come for the obvious reasons, yeah?
You can do that by way of introduction.
Yeah.
And, and every interview will start with that we, we are here at the request of your board, at, at the, you know, to the community. We're here at the request of your board, we're representing their work and, uh, soliciting your input. So it's always that we're working for you, and that you're the driver in all of this. It did remind me, though, that one thing that wasn't on our group list, do you want at this point just an all-open community-at-large evening session? Or do you want to save that? We didn't get that one, I don't think, would you like that?
I thought we did.
Oh, we did?
Oh, with the Zoom, the Zoom meeting, or you're talking about an in-person?
Right, or do you want to save that?
Both, yeah.
If we, if we do an all-community, I would like to do that not here, or at a school, I'd like to do that at a... If, uh, if we're doing an all-call community meeting, I'd like to not do that at a school or a district location. I'd like to do that, like, an off-site community or, I don't know. Yeah, at a library, yes, the downtown library works.
We do the library auditorium a lot.
Auditorium.
Does, too, is it catches people who couldn't go to other sessions? It's just another date, usually. It's kind of a generic, okay, we only have one of those.
Oh, okay. They're booked, yeah, yeah, it's hard to get in, yeah.
Okay, I think we have gone through the, uh, agenda, we're only five minutes over, so I think we've done fairly well, we're excited. We hope you feel confident in us, that's what we've tried to convey, we're really excited to get going, and we all have candidates already that have expressed an interest, so... Yeah, that's right, so...
So everybody's happy.
Keep the feeling going, right? Life is good, but thank you. But it's very noticeable when a board is focused on a common end, and I think that's what really shows in your work.
So we would expect to hear from you to, for the individual one-on-ones, and look to schedule those, that's next.
The, yeah, as a feedback here, so you'll, uh, these three will schedule individual interviews with you and the superintendent, uh, other individuals. I'm going to follow up with an invitation for a shared drive, the minute, draft of the minutes will be in there, and as we put the advert, I, I'll send this to you first, Eric, but then it'll all go in for the board, the advertising language, um, and then as we get the dates and schedules, that, that will, e- e- everything that we do will be popped into that shared drive for you, and it'll be organized by folder, uh, in that, okay?
Quick question, are you using our, our contact information from the website? Because I have a better, I have a cellphone number that would be better, if, if you want to contact me, and that's not on the website. You have my, but you have my cellphone number? Okay, it's nine-two-zero-eight-one-nine-two-seven-four-one.
And it's nine-two-zero?
Yes. Yes, so you can text me or call me.
Yeah, and why don't you, we can adjourn, because I know people have to leave, but grab whoever has to leave quickly if you need their contact information. Um, but otherwise, we can probably go ahead and adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in most.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. It's like a Pavlovian.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again.
If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.